Fourth of 2025, we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Better than that. Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hi. For anybody out there in Zoom land, you can go to the town agenda tonight and find out how to get on here. Nothing better to do. Adoption of the agenda.
So, do you want to move Johnson House down to other business?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Put that down.
Do you want to consider moving housing? Here for the Johnson, the question of the Johnson House?
Long about midnight, you may.
You want to sit through the FEMA updates and all of that? Well, that's why I'm suggesting that would be helpful.
Well, yeah, that's why we'll do that. Let's move it up. Is anybody, anybody here for the wharf?
Yep.
All right. Right after, the wharfs won't take long. Let's take the working group nine and put it at 6.5.
If you want to put the Johnson House up there, it's 6.6.
Well, we'll leave that under.
Because they'd like to probably talk about that, hear about it.
All right. 0.6.
Move Johnson up there.
All right. I assume no more, no more comments?
No, I'm good.
Price of lobster, nothing?
No, nothing.
All right. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone.
Wait, 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 by public comment.
Oh.
Oh, public comment, sorry about that.
Oh, we have Chuck Piero.
Oh, never mind, not public comment.
Sit back down.
I knew what I was doing. I'm Chuck Piero, the Harpswell Solid Waste Manager. I just had a couple of safety issues to touch on. Next week, we're getting ready to basically put the speed bumps back in next door and get all the parking barriers put in place. I want to make the administration, the general public, and the select board aware that last year, we had three incidents where people drove into the building. We had two instances where they drove in and crushed two garbage-to-garden totes full of rotten food.
Think they were aimed for your office is where it was.
I wish they would, it'd be safer there, I got concrete around me there. And we had two incidents where people literally drove all the way through, one hitting the gate, the other one hitting the bollard, basically where Don at usually is standing. So, that is prompted, and this year, we've already had one person drive into that area also. So, this is, just to make you aware, that we have purchased some concrete jersey barriers now. We're going to be fortifying certain specific areas over there. There'll be a large concrete one in front of the hole where people dump their bottles and cans through. People have their back turned to the parking lot, that's a very vulnerable spot. We want people to feel safe over there. We're going to put two jersey barriers in the two parking spots directly in front of the organic drop-off for garbage-to-garden. Again, people have their back to the parking lot, they need to be able to feel safe there and not worry about that. And we're going to have a small row of three footers in front of the actual hoppers now. So, the public should be made aware, no more running over the plastic ones, because you're going to be doing some serious damage, and it's not going to be the town's obligation to repair anything. It's on you. We also need people to start paying more attention to their speed, speed is a constant issue over there. I do not want to see somebody get hurt crossing that parking lot, a child, any situation. Couple of quick reminders, we do not allow dogs out of your vehicles in the parking lot or up at the transfer station. We've had dogs get nails in their paws up top, and we've had people get bit down below. The last couple of years, we've asked people to keep their dogs in the vehicles, it's just not the place for that, not everybody likes dogs, people need to feel comfortable there doing their daily business. We are looking to get the parking lot striped as soon as we can, we usually coordinate that with the town office and with the town striping through the town road commissioner, just waiting to hear back from that. And there's one more thing that I'm totally drawing a blank on, but people will figure it out when they see it, so we'll leave it at that. But I just want you guys to know, it really is important for the public to know that when they're hitting stuff from now on, it's going to be immovable stuff, not stuff that they can run over and drag through the parking lot like happens. So, it's, I've been putting it off for a couple of years, but it's really time to make sure people are safe over there. People should not be worried about stuff like that, it's crazy. Luckily, up to this point, nobody's gotten hurt, so.
Well, there was the case where the, what was it, Thompson? Where the guy got pushed down into the dumpster and was killed.
That was Cape Elizabeth.
Cape Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Cape Elizabeth.
The irony of that is, he's the guy that designed it.
Yeah, geez.
He was?
Yeah, he was the town public work director, and he got pushed into the hopper, and that was, yeah, crazy. We don't want anything like that happening in Harpswell.
No.
We don't want anybody getting hurt there, it's a busy place, it's about to get much busier, and we want everybody to feel safe and confident coming in there. That's really, just please slow down, slowing down is the biggest thing, and pay attention. Don't be on your phones coming ripping through there, that's the biggest distraction. If you have an older population that don't pay attention as much either, I'm just going to say it. But just be alert, it's a small parking lot, very busy, lots of traffic, kids, slower people, we just need to be safe, the whole community needs to be safer in that parking lot. Thank you.
Thanks. One more thing I forgot to mention, or I should have mentioned, the select board announcements, a former select board member passed away this week, Jim Henderson. Probably 12, 14 years ago, he's on the select board here, and passed away earlier in the week. He lived right off the mountain road here, neighbor of mine, so. Anyway, for those that didn't know, Jim Henderson left us.
All right. So, the one under select board announcements, roadside cleanup this year was 1,860 pounds of garbage removed from the roadside, was the final tally.
Lot of junk.
Lot of junk.
Yep.
Lot of plastic.
All right, Christie, town administrators report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of recommendations to make tonight for new hires. One is a temporary employee, they would be a garden coordinator at our Mitchellfield Garden. The candidate is Lisa Benhaman. She has experience, 10 years of experience working and managing organic gardens at Bowden College and with the Chawaki Foundation, so she will be a great addition to this location at Mitchellfield, and we are recommending her at $22 per hour with an effective start date of April 26.
So moved.
Seconded, no discussion, all in favor?
Thank you. Second new hire, since the retirement of Rhonda Peak, who was our administrative clerk and deputy treasurer, we have been advertising for that position. We've had several candidates, and we recently have interviewed and recommend our Brian Hubbard of Harpswell for this position. He has an extensive business and management background, a degree from Bowden College and a master's in business administration from the University of Michigan. He's very well qualified to take on this role, and I think he's going to present some really good skill sets to the town and be an integral part of our administrative and financial team, so we would recommend that he be hired. This is a part-time position with flexibility, and the rate is $27 per hour.
I move we hire Brian Hubbard.
I will second it. No discussion, all in favor?
Thank you. And the last item regarding personnel, the board a couple of weeks ago approved a new position that was in the budget approved by the voters, it was a waterfront operations and park assistant, and we were getting ready to advertise that position when the deputy harbor master Greg Coyne informed us that he could no longer serve as the regular deputy harbor master, but he would be interested in this part-time position, which has more flexibility than the deputy harbor master position, so.
He's the deputy deputy harbor master.
So, the harbor master, Paul Plummer, is recommending that the town hired Greg in this newly created position, that he retain deputy harbor master as some of his responsibilities, but that he no longer be the backup, regular, part-time, seasonal deputy harbor master, and that we end up, you know, looking for a deputy harbor master rather than this position that we were going to advertise for.
So, he would also be the parks and waterfront?
Yes.
Operations assistant?
Greg Coyne would be, yes.
Okay, I move that.
I'll second it. No discussion, all in favor?
Thank you. And I think the last item I wanted to mention is, we have a medication collection day here at the town office on Saturday, so it starts at 10:00 in the morning, it ends at 2:00 in the afternoon, and we appreciate the collaboration with the sheriff's department, we would not be able to hold this event if not for their willingness to provide a deputy to be here, so come dispose of your medications appropriately, and we'll be here. Thank you.
Thanks. Consent agenda.
I will move the consent agenda, which is appointment of officials and authorization of the warrants.
I will second it. No discussion, all in favor? All right. Wharf applications.
Our first one up is 9 Grace Lane, map 28, lot 66. No one showed up at the site visit, other than the owners and Redfish. It's pretty much a replacement of what was there, but better. It's nestled right in between the ledge, it's really not going to go out into the water, perpendicular, if you will, like a normal wharf, tucked in behind a lot of ledge, so it's met all the criteria and looked good.
Any questions?
No, I'm good.
The second one is 84 Bethel Point Road. Again, at the site visit, none of the neighbors or anyone else showed up but the owner and flycatcher. This is just a ramp and a float, it is going to sit on the flats during low tide, there was some activity, proclamming in the area, but nowhere near where this float and ramp is going to be.
That's what I was wondering, if those were productive flats?
Correct. Looked like it was farther out, there was activity, and way, way across. Other than that, again, it met all the criteria, and nobody was there to object.
Okay, I'm good. You're good?
Yep.
All right, then, a move to approve both applications. As the harbor master indicates, there's no hazard to navigation, no injury to rights of others in relation to fishing, bowing, or navigating.
Thank you.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor? All right. 0.6, start with the proposed revision to Affordable Housing Work Group report. Taking that, Courtney?
Hi, Courtney Snellings, a member of the Affordable Housing Working Group, and now the Housing Committee. We discovered we had a boo-boo in our report, it was a drafting error, and I'm speaking about it because I'm not putting the chair through that because he wasn't around for the Affordable Housing Working Group. We should have seen it, we didn't, but the report should be accurate, and it's on page 16, top of the page, where it says accessory dwelling units propose regulatory revisions enacted. That was never enacted, so enacted at the top of page 16 should go away. Okay. I can read the, read what was not enacted, if that would be helpful. Would you like me to do that?
For the public, I mean, we have.
Sure, absolutely. Okay. Accessory dwelling units propose regulatory revisions enacted via AHWG, and that, that's the phrase that should go away. Revise the recently enacted provisions for ADUs in non-shorland areas to make them more flexible and to encourage their use as attainable housing. Allow a property to have two ADUs on a lot in addition to the home if the lot has an area of at least 40,000 square feet, and at least one of the units will be restricted to attainable occupancy. In addition to the ordinance change, develop a program, possibly in conjunction with a local organization or group, to assist homeowners in evaluating the potential benefits of an ADU, including general information about ADUs, examples of how they can be created, and possible sources of financing. This program could also provide design assistance to homeowners if outside funding is available. So, I wish that had been enacted, but it was not, and that needs to go away.
I move that we take that out of there.
I'll second it. Any more discussion on that? Yep.
Sorry. Linda Whitehall, South Harpswell. I don't understand, or I need to understand, is this a new ordinance that I didn't know about?
No.
It's a report.
It's a report from the Housing Committee.
Okay, and it, does it go on the comprehensive plan?
Mentioned.
Pardon?
Well, it's yet to be seen.
Why don't we?
It's yet to be seen, if it's even mentioned.
Okay, okay. So, it's, it's not before the public yet?
No.
We've just made a correction.
Right, right, right.
Thank you, I tried to stay on top of things, but I wasn't on top of this.
The select board accepted it.
Okay, as, all right.
That was a mistake, so we wanted to make it was.
Got it, thank you.
All right, David, you want to speak to?
Yeah, so.
Did Tim want to?
Tim, you've got something to say, go ahead.
Well, I just want, is an ADU, we all consider an accessory dwelling unit, when we say that there's going to be two on a lot, we're not saying.
We're not talking about any of this, we're removing the word "inacted."
That's the, okay, I just want to, I have a lot of tiny houses coming up, and so we're trying to manage our way through that.
No, that had been so, that was a recommendation that had, by mistake, marked as enacted.
And it, to me, there's supposed to be a original house residence, and then we have ADUs.
Right.
And I think that's why a lot of these terminologies are getting mixed up, that's all I want to clarify for everybody.
That's where the term additional comes in.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you guys may be familiar with Katie Nelbert Johnson's house on Bailey Island, the Bible Broadcasting Corporation owns that, and they had sold the property, including their transmitter and tower, and the person that bought the property, they was leasing it back to the, the spot, back to the radio corporation, they went bankrupt, and it ended up in court, and they had a hell of a time getting their tower and transmitter back. And so, a number of people on Bailey Island have asked me to, it was slated to be torn down, in fact, they did tear down the barn, wanted to try to save the house to make it an attainable home. In fact, a number of people have offered to buy it, and the corporation is willing to sell it. They, they don't want to have anything to do with it, they don't want to, they want it off their plate. So, they don't want to be landlords, but they understand that we have an attainable housing problem here, and would love to work with us. So, what I would like the, the Housing Committee to do, since it's made up of people who understand these issues quite well, a couple of things need to happen, that we need to look into to see if the lot is large enough to subdivide and break the tower off from it. If not, then what can we put in the deed, either an easement or lifetime tenancy or something that will protect them so they don't have that same problem? I'm not interested in the town having it or being a landlord, but to help the radio group to be able to create an affordable home. So, I would like to task the, your committee with, with looking into this, see what, see what might happen with it.
And maybe town lands also?
Yeah, could be, yeah. Yep. So, I don't know, we need a vote on that, but just.
You're just looking to investigate the possibilities with it, I guess, is what I'm gathering.
Even feasible.
They, I mean, they're willing to work with us, they don't want to be landlords, we don't want to be landlords, they'd like to sell it, but they'd like to protect themselves, they don't want to go through what they did before.
Yeah.
So, I think there are ways to do this, and I mean, it's a demonstration project that we could probably, a lot of other people around the state would be looking at what we're doing, so.
Yeah, how big's the lot? Have you looked?
They actually had it surveyed, and I gave the survey to, it's not big enough, I don't think, to split, but if we got creative in some way, they have, they did a survey, and I gave a copy of it to the, to the Housing Committee.
Bob Gendreau, Housing Committee, we have looked at this a little bit, we actually hunted earlier, because we did know about this coming our way, because we don't have a housing trust, we can't touch it, but we're, we're getting those legs under us, and we're trying to initiate that so that it would be able to be absorbed. So, it is a baby steps that we're taking, and we'd appreciate if we could do something, and it's not going to happen overnight. We're going to have to go through some communication and figure out liabilities and insurances and so on, but we would like the opportunity, and I think it would bode well for the town to show that we are trying to do something for attainable housing. Thank you.
Walk the walk, not just talk the talk. I would also like you guys to look into, how do you keep it affordable? The housing trust would be one way to do it, you know, a person buys it for cheap and then fixes it up and turns around and sells it for a million dollars. We, how, you know, put that in the deed somehow, but this is why I want the experts to take a look at it.
It would definitely come with covenants and such, but we have to work through all those legalese first. Thank you.
Do we have any idea of how patient the Bible group is, how quickly they want to invest?
They have been very patient.
Right, but we, I don't think we.
They've called me a couple of times, and they just, they understand our situation, and they know that we need some attainable housing, and they're willing to work with us on that. I don't know if they will wait a year, two years.
I just don't, I'd like, I think we can expedite it type of thing.
Yeah.
Yep. I'll get back to them and tell them we're still working on it.
Yeah.
All right.
We need to make a motion?
I don't think so.
Yeah, just, for both of your committees?
Just wanted to say that, John Rel, Housing Committee, we would really appreciate the opportunity to take a look at this, and I think it's, it's got tons of potential, and we can move on it pretty quickly. I don't think it's going to be years before we can figure out some way of doing it.
I think your concern was that you didn't want us to think you were going off on your own without some sort of direction, so, yeah.
I might have said my name too fast.
Could be, could be.
Oh.
We get that settled?
Yes, thank you.
Do we need a motion on that?
I think if it's the consensus of the board that you're referring it to the Housing Committee, and they kind of have a clear sense of what the board is looking for, I think that's enough for the moment.
Yep.
All right. That's what we'll do then. All right, thanks. The fourth is Duncan. FEMA project updates, Little Island Road, Ocean Street Bank.
So, Mike Drake, our emergency management agent and fire administrator is here, I hope your alarm didn't just go off.
No, it's just a test.
Oh, oh, gee, okay.
Good evening, Mike Drake, Town Fire Administrator. I just wanted to give the board an update on what's going on with FEMA, monies we've received, monies that's hanging out there right now. So, far to this date, we had a bunch of minor road repairs after the January storms last year, repairs to the Abner Point Road, Lowell's Cove Road, Grassy Road, Graveyard Point Boat Launch, and the Pods Point Boat Launch. Out of those projects, we've been reimbursed $54,700. That equals 90% of what our, what our expenses were for that, so it's actually working out that finally we're getting some money coming in and getting reimbursed for all the stuff that we've done. The outstanding projects we have right now, Little Island Road, that is currently going through the permit process, and our engineer believes that project may start somewhere around June, if possible. There is an obstacle they have to overcome in permitting, where permitting doesn't allow riprap replacement within the tideline from Nov- until November to April. So, if they can't get a allowance to be able to do work during the summer, then we'll have to wait till next year. I've signed the final paperwork with FEMA and with the state on this, so we may actually receive the funds before we even start the project on this one.
So, just a little bit more background, the board signed a contract with our engineering firm to, you know, get the permits and to develop the bid specifications so that we can put the project out to bid, so you did already approve that, and it would be interesting for us to get the money before we actually start the project, that would be.
We consider it a blue state. That might be a problem for us.
Next up on Ocean Street, pretty much the same deal, they're just finishing up with design right now, after they get the design done, Will thinks that'll be done in the next couple of weeks, so then he needs to reach out to DEP and Army Corps for permits on that. Since we're not working within the tideline, it looks like we won't need a NERPA permit, so we should be able to get permits wrapped up in about four to six weeks for that project. Because of the complexity of the Ocean Street one, I don't see us going, starting that project until at least next spring sometime, which FEMA will give us a one-year extension, so we'll have till September 26th to complete that project. The only other outstanding project that we're going to have is the town dock. Thank you for putting that to the voters, now that we have money approved for that, we can start going through the permit process. I believe the town administrator has contract renewal with our engineer for that, since we're moving on to the third phase into the permitting, it's going to cost us a little more just to get the engineering done, and the engineering is reimbursed again at 90%, so we only end up paying 10% of those costs. And that's it right now, any questions on the outstanding projects?
Well, on the town dock, we have two options. And it looks like, second option is to add a second finger float.
To make it wider.
Yeah. So, couldn't we just add that float later? I mean, we just do option one and add the float later?
FEMA will completely reimburse us for that extra float.
I'm going to hand this out.
The reason why we have an option one and option two is FEMA wants to see what the actual repair costs are and what the repair plus the mitigation is.
Okay.
So, their mitigation is to make it more resilient, so part of that's going to be two feet wider, two to four feet higher, and since the original dock was kind of lopsided, the FEMA inspection team, the engineers they sent down, they figure that years of that being, you know, knocked to one side, knocked to one side, once the storm got a hold of it, it fell right over to that side.
Yeah.
So, they actually recommended putting the extra float on to the south side, so.
And making it two feet wider, the pier.
Yeah, and the cost tables, you know, just to repair, it's going to be 155, we're looking at possibly 228 with the mitigation. The town approved 200, but FEMA has already approved the 60,000 for the mitigation costs on this, so it looks like we'll come in quite a bit under budget after FEMA.
Wow, for a change, wow.
Cross your fingers, I can't guarantee anything.
Yeah, until we have it, you never know.
So, we're in the works, we do have a very good project manager from FEMA now that's helped us out significantly.
Yep.
He's doing a great job, unfortunately, we're trying to jam some stuff through, she is done with us the end of May.
Oh.
So, we want to try to make progress. The only project we haven't been finally approved on is the town dock, we're just waiting for some final paperwork on that. Like I said, Little Island and Ocean Street, we've been approved for those projects, so we may actually get the money before the project even starts.
Rough guessing, when you're going to get the rest of the paperwork on the town dock?
Right now, we're waiting for insurance, so we've got all the designs from Tim Forrester, everything's ready to go on Paul's end, the only thing we're waiting for is final numbers for insurance.
Okay.
We currently have just over 96 stops. So we may actually get the money before the project even starts.
Rough guessing, when you're going to get the rest of the paperwork on the town dock?
Right now, we're waiting for insurance. So we've got all the designs from Tim Forrester. Everything's ready to go on pause and the only thing we're waiting for is final numbers for insurance. We currently have just over 96,000, 95,000 that we've got from them. We're looking at getting maybe a few more thousand, but you know, FEMA, we have to have every number exactly. We've got to wait for that to get in. So on our side, on the town side, we're good to go. We've just got to wait for the insurance.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Yep. Anything else?
Nope.
Oh, maybe.
Maybe if you just.
Don't go anywhere.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Linda White-Hall again, South Harpswell. 60,000 only for mitigation and that's from FEMA, is that right? And if we don't get that money, you're 228,000 over what's been appropriated?
228 includes the 60. So the 60,000 would be for that, that it would include an additional float. So we don't, we don't.
You don't have to do the float.
And it includes a longer ramp, which we wouldn't necessarily have to do. And it includes a couple extra mooring blocks.
So you are able to keep this at the $200,000 level and work could proceed assuming the permitting?
Yes.
All works.
Yes, hopefully, yes.
Thank you.
That's a good question. I think what we would like to ask the board to consider tonight is back in November, you hired flycatcher, Tim Forrester. And he did the designs that were taken to the town meeting. Town meeting approved up to 200,000. He's now suggesting that if you, if you would amend the contract from November, which he had put in three phases. He had a design phase, he had some research phase, and then he had a permitting phase. The board approved up to 10,000 for phase one and two, and then the permitting phase was the third phase. So now he's asking for permission to proceed with that permitting phase. And he's asking or suggesting that we should seek the permit for the wider, higher fixed dock, for the longer ramp up to 50 feet, for the extra float and for these additional mooring blocks. Because FEMA will potentially pay for those three items that we consider mitigation items. And we can always pull back from that, but he's suggesting that he applies for what might be the total project. And that would require a NERPA permit, I believe. So we would need an amendment to Tim Forrester's agreement for an additional 10,000.
Where's that coming from?
For phase three.
So now we have the 200,000 that that.
Come out of that.
The project cost, yes.
Just a quick note, FEMA's approved us for engineering costs of $37,040. So this is well below what they'll reimburse us for.
Okay, then I move that we contract with Flycatcher. Please, get the permits.
All right, seconded.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Thank you. So you're fine with, with the option two, permitting the option two? Just want to be clear.
Most definitely.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Town property related matters, Potts Point floats, lease rates for Pammy's Ice Cream, lobster boat race requests for Mitchell Field and Town Lands Committee for potential parking ordinance.
So the first matter, the Potts Point town floats, the harbor master, Paul Plummer, has discussed this issue with the Harbor and Waterfront Committee. They talked about how things worked last year down at Potts Point. There was at least one float that the town set up where people, two, okay, thank you, two floats. And they could put their, tie their dinghies up to the float and they would have, they had a haul off that they could use from shore. I know Linda will correct me if I'm wrong here. And so they would climb down over the embankment, use the haul off, get to the dinghy, then go out to their mooring. I think it may have worked okay, but.
I think it did.
The Harbor and Waterfront Committee was concerned about liability issues and, and they didn't want to. I don't think they wanted to go on record or they didn't have enough information to go on record to suggest that the town do it again. So they wanted the board to consider whether or not you want to continue that for another summer. I would offer up that I could have the town's insurance agent come to the site if that gives you a little more information about risk factors, if that's anything you want to consider. I will say we allowed the activity last year. Do you want to allow it again in the same form this year?
We didn't have any problems last year and I.
I know commercial fisherman, I've seen him hauling himself out there.
There is a sort of a natural step that people use to go down there and, you know, I don't think it's a problem. I'm willing to, I'm willing to do it again.
I was seeing an issue with it. There was, the only thing I'll bring to the board's attention is there was some people at the Harbor and Waterfront Committee that did raise concerns that it was being used after dark and stuff like that. I don't know how much there was that, but that's maybe if we can just put a sign up that says, you know, for liability reasons, that says hours during daylight, hours only.
You know what those signs are? They're for other people, not for.
But just for, I think that would, that would be the only, I could see liability coming to the town, you know, if something happens at night, you know, because somebody slips and falls.
Well, it's considered a, what's it called, an attractive nuisance. And it's like you're inviting people to use it and, yes, Linda.
Well, I think Matt kind of cleared that up, but even when there was a dock there, kids and people would go down at night, turn on their flashlights, I know, to look for. And that kind of thing. I don't know, I never saw anybody at night and I never saw anybody abusing this. And I did use it two or three times a week.
So it's just to get us through the summer and get the new dock back.
Certainly is not ideal, but it worked.
It's a fix.
And we got to get our floats out of the way, so I'll just put them somewhere.
Do you want a motion on that? So the board is responsible?
I think it might be good to have a motion, but I'm not clear if you want this nighttime thing or just let it be.
Let it be.
I move that we do the same thing we did last year, put the load in and put the haul off.
Any more discussion, Linda? All in favor?
Next.
So the next item is the lease rate for the 2025-26 season for Pammy's Ice Cream, which is at the entrance to Mitchell Field, town-owned property. This is the fourth of a five-year lease agreement and we are just proposing a two and a half percent increase. There's one rate for the months that Pammy's is open, $475 per month from May through October. And then there's a different rate, more of a storage rate, $265 per month, excuse me, from November through April. Total revenue to the town, $4,440.
Have you discussed this with Pammy? She's good with it? Yeah, I move we do that.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on this? None? All right, all in favor?
Thank you. Next item is the 2025 lobster boat races at Mitchell Field in Harpswell. And there's a group that has organized this event. They do a great job. They put a lot of time and effort into it. It's really quite a nice event. And they are asking for the town to waive the fee for the use of Mitchell Field for that day.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Not a problem.
Okay, and that would be Sunday, July 27th, rain date, August 3rd.
David beat me to the motion then.
Went so quickly.
Oh, we voted. We were that quick.
You've got to pay attention though.
We did it all at once. It was a, it was a move, seconded and voted.
It wasn't really out of his mouth yet.
I think number, item number four under Town Property, Select Board Member Gilli was going to give some input or background on the potential parking ordinance, exploring that. I think the Town Lands Committee.
Yeah, they just wanted to start a dialogue with people. It's all they were looking for. They didn't want to enact an ordinance or anything like that. They just wanted to start a discussion. And if all they wanted to start is a discussion, I personally don't have a problem with just talking.
And we talk about it all day long.
And we're talking the giant stairs.
I'll, for transparency, I made them aware that I would, personally would not support an ordinance myself.
And neither would I. They've probably gone over the history of the place. We quelled a lot of the issues. We took it off any of the town. None of our town maps mentioned it at all.
I agree with you completely, Kevin.
Yep, we did that. And then Terry found more parking down there.
Yep, I am. Yep, no issues.
But it ain't broke.
Hopefully, we won't get another COVID, so hopefully, so that's, that was the problem.
Yep, oh, it was when COVID hit.
Yeah, oh yeah, I mean, everywhere was.
But they can talk about it all they want to.
Yep. I'll, I'll bring, do you, just, you shared Kevin's same thoughts? It might quell the conversation.
Or would you like to hear from the committee after it does some kind of review or investigation?
Well, if they come up with some bright ideas, I'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, we're open to other ideas, I think, but I think we can make them aware that an ordinance shouldn't be one of those ideas.
We're just letting that one die in the vine.
I think that's what they were going to try to look at is other ideas, like maybe some signage or something like that, you know, to quell.
There's no room for another signage. The, I don't think we've had too many complaints in the last few years. We weren't heard about it.
I think there, it happened right before I joined the Town Lands Committee. There were some people that, that came and spoke up about it. I can't, I wasn't there, so I can't speak to it completely.
Neighborhood used to show up en masse here.
Oh, I remember.
We did everything possible. They, they wanted to rename the road. They want, you know, all kinds of things happened. It quieted it down. Terry went to great lengths, found some initial parking down there.
Our right-of-way is very wide there. There can be additional parking. It would take away people's use of the town's right-of-way. They have their own parking. Other options.
Well, we're not going to enact on anything, so there's nothing to vote on. All right, I look forward to this. Committee appointments?
Are you staying for something? Would you mind, Chairman Johnson, would you mind taking number 11 prior to number 10?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yep. Right now, contracts, main health, paramedic services and vision amendment.
So the main health contract, initially the town started this agreement with Midcoast Hospital back in 2012. Sorry. So initially, the town started this contract with Midcoast Hospital in 2012. It's been an excellent program. We hear a lot of positive comments about it, that a paramedic is available to all parts of Harpswell 24/7, around the clock. And we are looking at proposing a new five-year contract. I couldn't believe it when I typed in 2030. I was like, oh my gosh, I can't believe that. So, you know, we presented the contract showing you the changes and they're really minimal, I would say. I reached out to the chiefs of each department to see if they had any suggestions. We worked with Dave Hudson, who then works with the president of Midcoast Hospital. And we're proposing this new agreement. Obviously, the cost is going up. The new one-year agreement, which would essentially start on May 1st, would be $421,300.
If it saves one life, it's worth it.
What did, just for my own personal reference, what did, did the fire chief support it?
Oh, yeah.
It's the best thing we have in town.
Well, I move that we.
Besides us.
I move that we recontract. The only thing difference in it is the cost, the underpayment. So I move that we contract with them.
Seconded.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
We'll have you sign a clean copy at some point or maybe this, anyway. I don't want you to sign the strike-through version. I want to make sure you have a clean copy to sign. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Did you want to say anything more about the paramedic contract? And then we have one other contract. It's an amendment to the existing revaluation contract. We wanted to just review with Vision Government Solutions, the company that was hired to do the town-wide revaluation, that they would also perform callbacks. We needed additional money in the budget, which the town meeting approved, so that their personnel would do a callback. Without this, this amount in the contract, 26,000, they would have sent their person to the home once. And if someone wasn't there, there would have been an option to fill out a form, but there would not have been an option for coming back to the property. So that's what this does. Again, $26,000 change. It will take the contract to 420,000 in total.
Remind me what was approved?
What was approved initially?
Town meeting.
Oh, for town meeting? We approved more than 26 because we also have another agreement coming to the board for business personal property. So this is definitely covered. This company does not do business personal property, so we have to contract with another company for that. And that will come before you as another contract.
All right, I move that we modify the contract.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Ready? Act the committee appointments.
Okay, so going alphabetically, I believe Select Board Member Gilli may speak to aquaculture. Won't act on any appointments tonight. Did you want to?
I think we could kind of roll this committee into a full-time committee and more of a work group and more of like a fisheries knowledge group where they can review aquaculture leases to wharves and stuff and peers that may be in fishing grounds and kind of utilize that map that the aquaculture group made. I think they can do some other stuff, like maybe working with a recreation committee to hold some type of fishing festival or something like that. And maybe review any ordinances that, that may affect the fishing community, you know, that comes, that comes across from the planning board. Maybe they can offer guidance that way. I'll work on drafting a type of mission statement for the board for next meeting if, if that's something that you guys would be amendable to.
So since the current aquaculture group is until dissolved, there's no action needed on that?
Yeah, I think we're going to keep them, just keep what we got until the voters vote on June 10th in case they, we need to make any presentations or, and for the public hearing that's coming up. There's members of the group that had planned on being there if there were questions.
Thank you. Bandstand, you had four current members that, whose term expires April 30th, 2025. Three of the four have reapplied. Robert Biggs has resigned. So they, if you reappoint the three current members, they will be seeking another member to replace Robert Biggs.
He says, says he's reap, oh, resigned. I'm sorry, that's.
Yeah, it's hard.
My glasses.
I don't have glasses and I'm struggling, so.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, this is a very good committee. They really hands-on. They work to raise money. You know, they work real hard to get, we'll call them acts, musicians to play. They try to break it up so they don't always have the same ones. I mean, it's a really good committee, really hands-on.
We, we did have an application. Jack Roland, he selected energy technology as first, resiliency and sustainability as second, and bandstand as his third choice.
What's the date on that? Because she didn't indicate this on the spreadsheet.
Application date was 3/13/24. It might just be, oh, we can maybe worth reaching back out.
We can certainly reach out. I think it's not on the spreadsheet because I had.
It was outdated, maybe.
Right, indicated that we do like the last year and that's just kind of outside the last year, but that's a good point. Indicated to them that we do like the last year, and that's just kind of outside the last year, but that's a good point. What was the name again?
Uh, Jack Roland. I can, here.
Thank you.
Yeah, because he's on, he's on it now until.
Oh, easy?
Yeah.
Oh, nevermind.
Till 2027.
Missed that one. I missed that by a little bit diagram when I was trying to connect applications to committees.
He's not, he's not on the bandstand list. David, I select board member Chipman. I don't, he's not a current member of bandstand.
No, but he's on, I'm sorry, he's on the energy technology.
Oh, right. Right.
But you can, if he has interest, we can ask.
Absolutely.
Where should we get us a note?
And so do you want to review each of these and then make all your motions, or do you want to do committee by committee? Because before you now are three applicants who have reapplied. I think it'd be simpler, more clear if you did it committee by committee.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yep.
So did you want to appoint those three members?
Yeah, do we make, do we make a motion?
Yeah, move, we do that.
I'll motion, motion it.
Okay, a second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
There we go.
So Board of Appeals, you had three members whose term would be ending on April 30th, 2025. They all have reapplied. There is one change to this, though. So you have three applicants reapplying. You had a new applicant, Larry Schofield, and the board has been, provided all the new applications. One other change is that David Santa Marowski was an associate, is currently an associate, and Jim Knight is currently a full member. He has asked to be moved to an associate. Jim, James Knight has been asked to be an associate, to change his appointment to an associate, and that David Santa Marowski could be considered as a full member.
So they swap. Swap around. Yeah, okay.
So I don't.
Make that a motion?
Are you reappointing your three members who have reapplied, and no action on, on the new one? And you're making the change between James Knight and David Santa Marowski?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's a little complicated, but yeah.
Only have 40 more committees to go.
So on budget, there was just one member whose term would be expiring, and that's David Santa Marowski. He has reapplied for that, and you have had one new applicant for the Budget Committee, Allison Hawks.
Isn't Bacon, uh, Bacon, Macon Pulsiver, isn't he on, or was on the budget? He's no longer?
He is, but his full name is Stephen Pulsiver.
Oh, okay. Let's see. So he's still on for a couple more years. And we've only got one.
One position.
One position.
Open.
Allison's the only one that applied for that?
Well, and the current member, David Santa Marowski.
Oh.
He's reapplied.
Oh. Well, then we keep Zamarowski then, right?
Experience.
Yep.
Yeah.
So you're moving?
We're moving, we, we have to have. Add, you know.
David Zamarowski reapply. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second it.
Are there, uh, others?
That makes five.
Yep.
A nice uneven number.
All right.
So are you, are you all in favor?
Yep.
Yes, we were.
Comprehensive Plan Task Force, you, you know, nobody has.
Do we have to do anything?
Well, you haven't, nobody has reapplied because your current members are, this task force is until dissolved. But we put it on here. You have had Peter Lieberworth resign, and you have one new applicant.
Julie Malton resigns as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I resigned.
Yeah, and Kevin resigned.
Okay, so this needs to.
But I think we only have three, maybe four more meetings planned, so it's, I don't.
Well, we, we, we can add Heather Allen, there's room.
Yeah, there's room, and she wants to do it.
Yeah. Have she applied for it?
And a motion?
Yeah, we'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I'm adding Heather.
Thank you. The Conservation Commission. There is one, two current terms that would expire. Both of them have reapplied. I keep looking at Mary Ann because she has had a lot of new applicants for this committee. Sean Ruel, if I'm saying his name correctly. Gary Fuller. By a lot, I guess I meant two.
Well, Mary Ann's memo. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a resilience. Mary Ann, he says, too many committees.
She's a great recruiter.
Yes. So, basically, with, with it, this committee's full.
Yeah, with the reappr.
Applied and, uh.
Yeah. I move that we accept the reapplications.
Second.
Here comes Mary Ann.
All in favor? Whoops.
And wait.
We're quick on the trigger.
Mary Ann, they've, from Conservation Commission, you mentioned Sean Rule on conservation?
He's applied to be on conservation.
We had talked the other night about Resiliency Committee.
His application, and hopefully, this one came in, I think, since Tuesday, so I'm not sure the Select Board has this, but according to what I've been told, Sean, who happens to be in the room and can help us, has applied for conservation, resiliency and sustainability, marine, and. Okay.
He went, walked check crazy.
Trust me. It's fun.
And you're on housing, so.
Okay, that's what I just.
Were you interested in conservation as well, or just the reason?
Yeah.
Well, which is fine. I thought it, it got switched, and I didn't want that.
Got it.
Well, wonderful.
Got it. Okay, great. So the motion they just made is they're going to reappoint the current members, which would fill that committee, including the associates.
Correct.
Is that correct, what I heard?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
But resiliency is coming up.
Yeah, we're getting there.
sooner or later.
So energy and technology, nobody, nobody's term was ending this year?
Nope.
No new applicants. Within the last year.
Okay.
Gary Vincent did reach out and ask if he had to reapply each year, which I did indicate, since his application was from 2023, and it was acted on in 2024, or not act, I should say, not acted on in 2024, but it was on this list. So he did ask, and I did indicate that he had to reapply, but currently, there's no openings. Fire and rescue, that's by, you know, position?
No. We, uh, we discussed adding one more chair, so where's that one? We'll have one more voice.
Well, it looks like John has resigned, right, so.
Who?
John Pearson.
Oh, Pearson, but he put Nelson Barter instead.
Right.
Oh, okay.
You have seven members now. You're, you're talking about going to eight?
Yes. And, and that committee will turn into the Emergency Vehicle Committee. They, they want to re, reconnect here shortly.
Buy a new truck, huh?
Yeah, I'm afraid so.
So how would you like to handle that, Mr. Chairman?
You tell me.
You want to expand that committee to eight? Do you have somebody in mind, or are you, or are you seeking applicants?
No, I know Sean Hall was interested in being on the committee.
But he is a town employee, so. They can serve as staff support, but we don't put town employees on committee.
Do that. Staff support, he could do that.
Yeah.
He wanted to, we have Mike Drake who does that currently, so I don't know.
He can certainly still attend the meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll leave it alone.
Leave it at seven then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Let me just say it would be weird, but.
Yeah. Well, we, we kind of did it with Pat Mark Wallace. He was working up there, and he was a selectman, became a selectman, yeah.
Oh, but that.
Worked for himself.
That was an elected official and, and it wasn't appointed by the Select Board.
All right. Good point. Moving on.
Harper and Waterfront, you have one person who's term was expired, excuse me, it goes to the next page. But you had several resignations. Matt Gilli.
Yep.
And Scott Merriman. And by several, I mean two.
Goes on to the next page.
And you do have, you know, now my pages are messed up.
Spills on to the next page, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I have my pages out of order. Since this was posted on Tuesday, Jerry Lehman and Jason Hillman, their terms also expire, and they both have reapplied.
Okay.
So you have three current members whose term will expire, and they have all three reapplied. And if you appoint them, then I would say you're still looking for two members.
What about Caleb Hawks? He applied for the Aquaculture Committee, but I think he would very easily change that to Harvard Waterfront. He's a young fisherman out of Cundys Harbor. He's involved in the lobstering community. He's well spoken.
Would you like us to reach out?
Yeah.
Absolutely. But did you want to reappoint your other three members?
Yeah. Yes.
Yep. So moved.
Sorry, I jumped the gun.
No, no, that's great. So Select Board Member Chipman has moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Did we have anyone else apply for that?
No. And, um, Ja, Jack Dosty's term is, is, oh, he reapplied, I see. Yeah, I, I get confused trying to follow the line, or I could be sorry. I'll get my paper out again.
They look alike.
It's very much so looks alike.
I had it tilted, so I was looking at it as, as Moos had reapplied and not Jack.
You, you, use the green paper.
Oh, good call. Yeah, there we go.
See to the C.
There's something new.
Yeah.
It is small. So housing, you have one member's term expire, and Sean Rule, and he has reapplied to be on it, and you have one, two, three, four, five, six new applications.
Oh.
Wow.
Bob Eaton, Debbie Forrester, Charles Hancock, Brian Hurst, Stacy To Burge, Helen Allen, and I think I already mentioned Sean Rule reapplied.
What, what does their committee call for, for a number of members?
I'm not sure what.
Well, it's a, regardless, it's a town committee. You can, it's not mandated by an ordinance that tells you how many you have on the committee size.
It usually suggests, though.
We, we essentially took affordable housing and just slid them down into housing.
Yeah.
I can.
I move that we accept the reapplication of Sean. He's chair. He seems like he's done a pretty good job.
I second that.
All in favor?
I was going to call up the mission statement, but, yeah, would you mind doing that? Okay. All right, so Sean's been re. And pardon me, but you have moved in.
Sean.
Past.
Yep.
Okay.
Accept a.
While Christie looks that up, do you want to discuss marine resources?
I got the mission statement here. It says up to seven members.
Up to seven.
On housing.
Yep.
So you have five, with your reapport, reappointment of, Sean, you have five members.
Yep.
I move we appoint Heather Allen.
Yep.
Her husband's a fisherman. She's got young kids. These is the people where, built in 2004.
I, I don't know Debbie Forrester, but it might be a new, a new face.
Yeah.
On the committee.
I like the idea of that.
Did you get that, Terry?
It was moved, we take that as being moved, and so, second, okay.
And Debbie Forrester.
And then all in favor?
Sure.
Both?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks for asking.
Marine Resources, you have two members whose terms were expiring, and they both have reapplied. You have new applicants. Sean Rule has applied, no, we, we scratched that earlier. We scratched that one. Okay. So there's no, no new applicants for this one.
We're both Charles Hancock.
Excuse me. Thank you.
I'm, um, there, there's supposed to be so many harvesters on the committee, but you remember that number?
I might be able to bring it up.
Yeah, we need five ordinance again.
You go, I'm on the town website.
Sean Hall has reassigned, resigned? Oh, we were unaware of that. Okay.
Oh.
Oh. Thank you, Mary Ann.
I would, would say on, on the issue of, you know, he, he is a town employee, but he's not a marine harvester. But he's a town employee under Fire and Rescue Department, which is why you really couldn't.
Right.
I don't think it's, it could be a conflict of interest, and you mentioned Mark Wallace when he was a Select Board Member and an employee, but he could not vote on anything pertaining to the recycling center and transfer station, so.
So Sean was a good addition on marine resource, but not bad. All right, so we got, so apparently Charles Hancock then applied into Sean's spot.
Okay. Motion? Second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Do we still need to look up the number?
I, I have the mission statement, and it doesn't say anything about a number of harvesters that have to.
In the ordinance?
I did look up.
Insisting of seven members and two alternates, at least four members of the committee shall be holders of town-issued.
Oh, we have that.
Commercial shellfish licenses, so you have that.
Robert Boyes, yeah, yeah, we're covered there.
Okay.
We weren't for a while.
Did Warren resign? He's online.
Oh, I think he did.
So if he resigned, then we're not covered.
Oh, young, young Warren resigned?
Maybe he didn't. Sorry, I don't know.
That's not indicated. You.
We can ask him. He's on Zoom.
Ask him, can we unmute Warren? Oh.
Hi, Warren.
Did you say he resigned?
I thought he, I talked to him about a claim issue a week or so ago, and he had mentioned to me I thought he had resigned. But I want to make sure.
Warren, it looked like you unmuted, but. We're not hearing. Do you want to go in the chat and send me your response?
Okay, we can write a note.
Get it. Holy, holy.
Okay, so we.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. We need another harvester.
So weird why everything's set up.
Oh, there's Warren.
Yeah, but.
One, two, three.
I can't, I can't hear him.
Yeah, we do need another harvester.
Yeah, but there's an open spot now, because wasn't Charles going to take Sean's spot?
Yep.
But we still have an open spot. We'll just have to make sure we fill that open spot with a harvester. But we still have an open spot, we'll just have to make sure we fill that open spot with a harvester.
I'll talk somebody into it.
Maybe Warren can recommend somebody if he ever.
There he is.
We see you, but we can't hear you still.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's not working.
You're not muted, are you?
What about, you're, you're.
This has to be muted. The computer in there is not muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you, it was not on my end.
Unfortunately, yes.
Mute, unmute, mute, unmute.
It's terrible, present.
I hate computers. Ah, yeah, I did resign, Warren Graville, Cundys Harbor. I did resign, I got real busy with my grandmother last fall. Doing a bunch of stuff, taking care of her and I, just getting to meetings was hard and I just, I told Paul last fall that it was just, it was unfair for me not to come to a certain number of meetings and, and be on a committee. So that I, I figured it was in the best interest that I just, I didn't, ah. So that's kinda, that, that's where I was with that.
Alright, have, have you changed your mind since?
I mean, I, I can, I can come back and start coming to some, it's like I just, I get, I with her doctor's appointments and stuff, sometimes by the time Wednesday afternoon rolls around, it seems like every time it happened was the night there was a meeting, that I was running around doing something.
Well, but, did you know another harvester that maybe would fill your spot efficiently?
Yeah. I don't, I don't know.
Well, let me just point out also, though, that the meeting schedule has changed. They're, they're, um, changing this, like, for example, they're not even meeting in May or June.
I noticed that and I, I wanted to go to the meeting yesterday and I, I realized that the meeting yesterday was at like 11 o'clock in the morning.
They decided to go around the tides.
Yeah, it's a tight thing. So how, how about this, Warren? How about you stay on the committee? And see what you can do.
Okay.
Alright.
I'll do it if I can use your skip.
You know where the key is.
I know where the key is.
Well played.
As a view.
Alright, so did you, you're moving and.
I don't think we can just, it didn't say resign, so maybe we just ignore that he ever resigned.
Well, I think you actually accepted his resignation, I think, and, or we had it under consent agenda.
I, I thought it was supposed to go to the next meeting when I talked to Paul in like last.
Can we approve him before he fills out an application and then just have him fill out an application?
He's a former.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can just use the prior.
I move that we approve the application of Warren Graville that will be coming.
Second. All in favor?
Go on board, bud.
That was easy, Warren.
Last time you'll answer a Zoom call.
I tried to get in there on the first public comment and it didn't work.
I, my apologies for that, I was in the other room.
That's okay.
Down a person, so when I came back, I admitted you.
Okay.
Did you, did, did you want to take a public comment now since?
Oh, my, my, just my question is more, that earlier was just gonna be, are you guys talking tonight about the, the bay closure?
Oh, no, not tonight.
That's gonna be two weeks from now?
Yeah, probably two weeks.
Okay, alright.
I started talking to Paul about it, we'll, we'll start talking more about it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Mary?
Thank you, Warren.
Thanks, Warren.
I think we're good with marine resource.
Yep.
So Mitchell Field.
Mitchell Field.
You had, um.
Got two resignations and two applications.
Two resignations, two current members have reapplied, and then you had three new applications. The chair of the committee, um, has reviewed the applications and is recommending the select board reappoint the two current members who have reapplied and to appoint Lee Cheever and Scott Gill.
Yep.
I was going to move that, so I will.
I'll second it.
Yep, me too. All in favor? Good.
Planning Board, one member, unless I go to the next.
Yeah, that's all of us.
What's that?
Has reapplied, and then you have one new applicant, Heather Allen.
I move we accept the reaplication and the new application.
And would the new applicant be an, an associate member?
Yeah, cause I was an associate member when I resigned.
Good, so get their feet.
I think she filled my spot. It's nice to start as an associate on that too and kinda learn the ropes.
Long learning goes on.
Yep. Alright, good.
So you all voted on that?
We did.
Yeah, I guess we did, yeah.
Yeah, we, actually, we did.
I think we did.
Yeah, I, I move second, yeah.
I actually remember that one.
It's getting blurry.
It is getting blurry.
Creative minutes.
Bigger font next year.
We're still like an hour and 15 minutes ahead of two weeks ago, though.
That's true.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
It's light out.
Don't say anything, no.
No, I'm sorry, David, I did, I, I'll put my foot in my mouth.
So Recreation Committee, you have had one member resign.
Need my green paper.
And you have one, two, three, four members, um, whose terms would be expiring, excuse me, another member had resigned, so you have three that have reapplied. Which is Richard Rumba, Tom Carr, and Mark Weaver.
Well, I move we, we, um, accept their reaplications. And we have one, we need one, right, on that?
They are one down. Interesting.
Seems to me.
Scott Gill.
I move we accept the application of Scott Gill to fill one of the positions, and then we just need one additional, right?
But Scott, well, Scott's applied for Mitchell Field.
In Recreation.
Yeah. I, I know Scott, he, he said he retired, he's been in there.
Yeah, his application said he coached kids and stuff too and did recreation stuff, so he seemed like he'd be a good fit, I thought.
Well, I did hockey with him 100 years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Right.
I'm gonna add that to my motion, okay.
Okay, yeah.
All in favor? Recycling.
The recycling, you have one member that Tina has emailed multiple times and has not heard back. And term will be expiring April 30th. You do have a new applicant, Bob Eaton, uh, but that you, you only currently have four members on there and one we have not heard back from about reapplying.
I move that we appoint Bob.
Which one is that, that you haven't heard from?
Uh, Jack Stokinger, Stokinger.
Jack is very active in the committee, I don't know why he hasn't, uh, I'm sure he wants to stay on, yeah.
You wanna include him or not?
Wanna include him and now.
Yeah.
We can.
Yeah, we still have room for Bob, right, cause it says five.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But that's four, we, we still need one.
We, Matt, select board member Gilli appointed, move to appoint Bob Eaton, which would make them five.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Where am I, geez.
Alright.
So you're appointing both this evening, Bob Eaton and Jack Stokinger?
Yeah, that was a motion and I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resiliency and sustainability.
Okay, here we go.
You have the associate has resigned and then, uh, Ken Omig, whose term was expiring, has reapplied since this was posted, um.
Who was that again, sorry, Terry?
Ken Omig.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
He has reapplied.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Most Price has resigned, Mary Ann, the chair, has reapplied. And you do have four new applicants, Amy Hyble. Actually.
Three.
No, it, not, yeah, not Amy Hyble. That was changed with Dan Hobecky, William Saxton, and Sean Rule. And then you also had, um, Mary Ann, you may have to answer this question. Uh, Tina indicated to me that you had said to replace the associate Mark with Brittany Tuck, but we've not seen an application from Brittany Tuck.
Brittany's on marine resources also.
Yeah, Mark was too, wasn't he, so it'd just be like a
Yep.
direct switch.
Mary Ann, Nate, I had talked to Brittany, uh, and then yesterday at the meeting, David said that he had talked to her as well and she seemed agreeable. Uh, but she had a doctor's appointment, so wasn't there. Would like to have a harvester.
Alright, so.
Be on that committee, on this committee.
You want us to assign her to the committee?
Assign her, well, as long as she's willing to do it.
Well, if, long she comes in and fills out an application, we, we.
We'll reach out to her.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I figured I would follow up with her and then I talked to David and said that we need another, another person. I'm on the committee, but I'm, I'm not a harvester, so I think it's good to have a.
But you also want, you, you need a planning board member, so Dan Hobecky.
Dan would be filling in the planning board opening that was left by Elle and. The girl.
Billy would fill Most Price from the Harbor and Water.
That's right, and then I talked to Billy because, yeah.
Yep, he wants that, yeah.
And he, he's gonna fill that.
So Daniel Hobecky and, and William Saxton.
Mm-hmm.
And Brittany Tuck.
And Brittany Tuck. She'll just have to resign, if she doesn't want to be on this.
Sounds like a motion, sounds like a motion, I'll second it.
Where's, uh, the representative of the commercial fishing industry?
Uh, on this committee?
Yeah.
That would be, um, that would be Brittany.
Hmm, is she wearing the two hats as marine resources?
Yeah, um, it's, it's a little tricky because now we have more marine committees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, we might have to do something going forward to change it. But, you know, wasn't it? We also have set up, we'd have to make some changes, cause we have it all set out in our mission statement, who's it supposed to be?
Right there, that's what I was doing, was trying to match up the people with.
Yeah, yeah.
Where they were.
So if you.
And Billy Saxton also, as far as marine industry.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he brings in that, that piece of it, you know. Um, you know, ideally at some point, I think we should have somebody from the business community when we don't, other than the fishing community, so.
So if you appoint Dan Hobecky, William Saxton, and Brittany Tuck, your membership will be at 10. So one should be an associate, because this is, and, is that?
Let me make Brittany of the.
Brittany Tuck, since we're not certain she.
Oh, yeah, sure, that's fine.
If she was replacing Mark, he wasn't associated anyway.
He wasn't associated as well.
Yeah, it would be a direct switch.
Right.
All worked out.
Yep.
And then did you want to appoint Sean as the other associate, since he, Sean Rule?
Oh, right.
Maybe, let's wait and see, I kind of agree with what Mary Ann said, maybe see if we can find another business owner or something like that.
I had reached out to him for housing.
Alright.
Okay.
So, um, yeah.
Well, are you gonna miss that?
Moved and seconded for.
For the.
Dan, Bill and Brittany.
Yeah, yes, all in favor?
Favor, second.
Yeah, just before I step away, I'm just thinking going forward, we have new committees in town and we probably need to sit down and discuss how we can fold that all into the Resiliency Committee.
I agree.
Yeah, at another time.
Okay, so your last committee, Town Lands.
Oh. I think.
Familiar with that one.
You have three members whose terms were expiring and they all reapplied. And then you had two new applicants, Paul Weiss and Gary Fuller.
It says Paul Weiss was on the committee and reapplied.
Yep, it does, so that, so Gary Fuller.
So Gary Fuller's the only new applicant. Did Gary, you, and, he applied for a few things and didn't.
Conservation, Mitchell Field, and Townlands.
I mean, it's nice to see somebody, I don't recognize the name either.
I, I don't.
You, David?
No.
I'm just thinking, like you said before, maybe a new face. Is there an associate position though? Or could we move an associate? Was Ken here? Let me find his application, like I have it.
Right on top, he says he, um, cares about protecting the land around us, enjoys working with people.
Get me beat.
But.
He's, he's, um, he's, he's been here for two years, he's from Wilburn, Mass. Not that we gotta hold that against him, of course.
And the, the only thing that I will hold against him is that he's been here for less time than Paul's even been on the committee. I wouldn't want to replace somebody that's served on the committee. Then that leaves. I wouldn't want to replace either one of the chairs either. I give, I move that we, um, I'd like to see that, maybe we can reach out and see if we have an opening on another committee, if Gary would be interested in filling an opening somewhere else, cause he seemed to be, be interested.
Maybe he would be a town steward.
We, we did have a application, was that a reapplied? No, it wasn't for a town steward, Michael Innis, right?
Yeah.
No, no, we still need one more though, right? Town steward?
Stewards, we have multiple properties, we. So that, that's actually, when you're appointed a steward, you check on and do some reports for town properties, so we could take probably.
You could just steward away, for lack of better adjective or verb.
Many more stewards, although I will say Town Lands committee members are automatically appointed as stewards as well. They all, all take a, a town property, but could I seek clarification? Did, did the board move and approve reappointing Hope Hilton, Ken Omig, and Paul Weiss?
We didn't, but I will.
I'll second.
All in favor? Yeah, we just did.
Yep.
Okay, and then as far as your stewards only, they're not Townlands committee members, um, you had.
John Perry and Don Meskell.
And they've reapplied, and we, I will move that we accept their reaplication.
Yeah, I'd second that.
And.
And I move that we accept Michael Innis's application as a steward.
And Gary Fuller?
We can ask him. I, I think maybe reach out to Gary and ask if he'd want to be a steward.
Would you do that?
And John Perry also reapplied.
Okay.
Since this has been posted, so I will certainly reach out.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye. And I move that we accept the reaplication of the stewards.
Is that all?
I think we just did that, that we just voted on.
I totally lost where we are.
We're done.
What done is where we are.
You caught up just in time, remember we finished.
Gonna miss Jeffrey again.
Could, just for my own sake, I'm sorry if I'm a pain, um, could you maybe just forward me what committees we, after all this, we still have openings on and
Yes.
I'll reach out and see if maybe I can fill those. Thank you.
Alright. We're on the 12, aren't we?
I know, we're doing pretty good.
Yeah, we are.
Suction of backing institution for the tan financing.
Interesting.
We just did this.
Did you have?
We got the bids today.
Oh, you approved that.
Sorry, go ahead.
You all said? The select board previously approved sending out the request for bids, that's what you're remembering, Mr. Chairman. So the bids were due today and I did include the book, excuse me, the motion in your book, um. Excuse me, the bids were due yesterday and they were opened, and I emailed the select board a memo today. Four written responses were received, and I'll say them in alphabetical order and their interest rates. They all complied with the town's request for bids. Andrew Scoggin Bank, interest rate 5.07. Bangor Savings Bank, 4.99% interest. Bass Savings Institution, 5.34%. And First National Bank, 6.17%. And I'm recommending that the. And I'm recommending that the select board accept the lowest bid, Bangor Savings Bank, on an as-needed basis, and and, and if, please do the formal motion of the
Yes, yes. I move that the vote entitled vote to authorize issuance of a tax anticipated note for fiscal year 2025 be approved in the form presented to this meeting, and that an attested copy of said vote be included with the minutes of this meeting. And that it be, uh, Bangor Savings.
I second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Thank you.
Good, let's see here, public comment? Anthony Gordy? Other business? Any other business?
No, we covered that already, right?
You never know, usually they have something at the end, and when I throw out-
Sneaking in.
Yep.
You never know.
At this point, we'll, at, uh, seven
Thirty-four.
Seven thirty-four, we'll enter executive session pursuant to MRS 405K, uh, six, regarding personal evaluation.